All right, I've got five o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order today, Tuesday, January twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. Roll call, we have selectmen Howdy Goodwin, Eric Eaton, Kevin Buck, myself, Jamie Thurlo, town manager Jesse Dunbar, and town clerk Sarah Abbott. McKenzie has said that she's not able to make tonight's meeting.
I move to excuse McKenzie Dur from tonight's meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse McKenzie from tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Adoption of agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to change? Approval of minutes. We have the minutes from January sixth.
I move to approve the minutes of January sixth, two thousand and twenty five.
That wasn't it.
Okay, I was seconding. Yeah. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from January sixth, two thousand and twenty five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Those two, they were not here. Approval of warrants. We have warrant sixty eight for five thousand nine hundred sixty dollars and twenty five cents. Warrant sixty nine for sixteen thousand nine hundred thirty one dollars and thirty six cents. Seventy for ninety six thousand nine hundred sixty nine dollars and thirty eight cents. Seventy one for ten thousand four hundred three dollars and sixty two cents. Seventy two for seven dollars and two cents. Warrant seventy three for seventeen thousand three hundred twenty four dollars and eighty four cents.
I make a motion for warrant sixty eight through seventy three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrant sixty eight through seventy three. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just was curious about the Southwest Harbor bill. There's quite a difference in some of those months. Which were the larger months? I don't have it in front of me now. They didn't break it down in months in what I saw.
Got it right here, Kevin.
I mean, some of them are six thousand, sixty nine hundred, some of them are twenty eight thousand.
So, those are, the six thousands is the difference on the billing error between when they initially billed us. So, instead of billing us the twenty seven, these months, they previously had billed us the twenty one.
Okay, because I was, I wouldn't have to guess on them.
Okay, so they billed announced warrant here. So, it's twenty seven is what it should have been monthly, roughly, I mean, I work, but twenty seven was what it should have been monthly and they didn't bill us that at the time.
Correct.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor?
Epstein, one seventy one.
Eric Epstein, seventy one. Next, we have the financial reports.
All right, these reports are as of December thirty first, which is fifty percent of the way through the fiscal year. In December, we collected a hundred and forty thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars in property taxes, bringing total collections for the year June ninety two point three, just behind last year. We also collected fifty four thousand six hundred and fifty two in motor vehicle excess tax, resulting in total collections of fifty eight point nine percent of what was budgeted, well ahead of base from all recent years. In the war fund, we received six thousand seven hundred and fifty in use fees and six hundred dollars in warrant fees in December. On the expense side, the administration cost center is at fifty point two four percent of budget. In December, we had additional expenses of three thousand one hundred and thirty in select board pay, three hundred and thirty eight in office applause, five hundred and three in postage, nine hundred and fifteen in attorney's fees, eight hundred and forty three in computer replacement, and fifteen thousand eight hundred and twenty three for property insurance. Public Works Cost Center is at forty one point seven nine percent of budget. In December, some notable costs included fifteen hundred in building repairs, two hundred and seventy three in heating well, seven hundred and ten on Kellytown roof, two hundred and forty five for diesel, and six hundred and nine in supplies. On the general ledger, we received thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty nine in revenue sharing from the state in December, bringing the total receipts for FY twenty five to seventy seven thousand two hundred and thirty eight, or forty two percent of what was budgeted for the year. In the road improvement reserve, you'll see a decrease of seven thousand three hundred and twenty seven for culvert paving on Kellytown and Clark Point roads. And you'll see the newly created backside blast reserve with a transfer over of six thousand nine hundred and thirty three that was left over from last year's fundraiser. Otherwise, there are no significant changes to the general reserve accounts and I have no concerns at this time.
Okay, thank you, Jesse.
Do you think the revenue sharing is going to hit your target, your budgeted amount? Because it seems to be running behind.
Yeah, it's hard to say. Maybe not, but it has been low before and then picks up, so we'll see.
I make a motion to accept the July twenty twenty four through December twenty twenty four financial reports.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the July twenty twenty four through December twenty twenty four financial reports. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, now we're on to regular business. First thing we have is our budget prep for this year. It's already that time. We have the library request. Well, is there anybody here from the library that would like to speak?
We're here to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, all right, thank you. I noticed that the increase is, was asked of about thirty five percent, and now it's been cut to nineteen point nine, so twenty percent, I'll just say.
Can we get a summary of the increases, why it's increasing?
I think we took out things like the generator, which we think we can do in kind of fundraising for, and, you know, we can do that in other ways. What we're dealing with right now is things like an alarm, which we've never had, and we think it only needs one, because of the art and the money that we keep in there. And there's a lot of deferred maintenance on the property that is now causing problems with the neighbors that we need to get out ahead of the new specs now. Want to say anything, Jane?
Well, and there are some things we want to do in terms of completing some of the work that happened when we did, we did the library. There's an emergency exit now that goes out to a part of VR that's moved still, and we want to try to find a way to make that more accessible for people who are walking. If they have motorbike problems.
Enter the next sentence.
But it's also for fire safety as well.
Correct.
Can you imagine?
So, the back, this one shows kind of the work, the actual projects versus the...
Yeah, and I crossed off there what was in there.
Yep. So, the rest of it, besides what's on the back here, is basically just wages would be, yep.
Yep, there's... There's a thousand more in books.
That's to cover online subscriptions, where I asked them to do, check out new books.
Yeah, audio books, and the publishers will let how many you can get, and if it requires an additional fee.
There's tapes, video, CD software went from seventeen hundred up to three thousand. Special programs went from three thousand to six thousand. Telephone, we've seen that from a thousand to thirty five twenty five. That line item is telephone and tech, I believe, sort of costs in there is for a new website. And also, otherwise, the biggest is maintenance repairs on electric and fuel or pumped up, slightly.
Yeah, I'm glad that you took out those few things, just because I know this year, we're going to get hit hard from the school as far as the budget, so.
Yeah, that too, and, you know, we want to make sure that people don't see more of it on the website.
You guys have any questions, or?
What's the, for the fence, just, can you explain that one a little bit more to me?
Which one?
The fence.
Oh, the fence is between us and the neighbors in the back.
Neighbors are complaining?
The neighbors would like some privacy from people of the library grounds.
I'm just not sort of saying complaining, but it would be a good neighborly thing to do. It's something that needs to be done, and we promised to have for several years that we would do.
And the fence used to exist before we did the construction, and they allowed to remove the fence for the construction, and everybody put back. I mean, nobody, again, really complains, but yeah.
That's reasonable, if it was there before, and...
Right, and then we just haven't put it back up since the construction of the expansion.
I kind of hate to see a twenty percent increase, but it isn't a huge sum of money overall, so. I guess I'm, okay.
By now, it is, it's a larger increase, but the, they've crossed off a few things that I had concerns with originally, so I think that's...
And you'll note that many of these are one-time sort of projects that won't be here after here.
Yeah.
Yeah, the fence repic, is the fence you putting back, is the old fence still there, or is, no, no, it's, oh, it's a new fence.
It's a new fence, yeah.
And that's going to be a solid fence to provide privacy.
I don't know what the design is, but...
No, it's, that's what was taught, yeah.
Right, we have a, we don't have solid plans for it yet.
What companies do you use for that?
I can't answer that question. I can't answer it now, I can answer it tomorrow.
Yeah, and all the wages were just two point five percent increase, so that just...
There's a slight increase in hours. Assistant librarian, just an hour extra for them.
Yep.
Or in the library, an extra three.
Like you said, Kevin, I think the actual sum of money is not that large, so I'm not...
Yeah, the twenty sounds bad, but in context, it's not that, it's not a budget breaker.
Yep.
Yeah, you guys okay? I make a motion to tentatively, tentatively accept the budget request of the Library Board of Trustees. I think your number is, is one hundred and twelve eight oh four? One hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and four dollars. Period.
It's been moved and seconded to tentatively accept the budget request of the Library Board of Trustees for one hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and four dollars. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Yes. Next, we have a review of the Southwest Harbor Tremont EMS Planning Committee bylaws. I understand from what I briefly talked to Jesse, that it went in front of the Southwest Harbor Select Board, and they wanted to make a few changes. As a summary.
That's the summary. None of the changes, you can see them highlighted in red, none of them are substantive to the document. On the second page, item six. I originally had seven, they wanted to change it to three. So, we spoke to MMA, and they confirmed that the correct number was in fact seven. So, I've changed it back to seven, and told their manager when I was doing that. Number nine, the board in Southwest had a hard time grappling with that sentence the way it was, so they changed it to the amended sentence. The amendment is fine. Third page, number four. They just reworded basically that paragraph. Number six, added the knee. Last page, number five, changed to two thirds vote for majority vote. And added a statement about all members fighting by conduct policies outlined in their respective business hours.
Now, did they want the two thirds vote, or did you change that number for?
They requested the majority vote.
Okay.
I agree. Nothing of a real substance, changed anything?
No.
My motion to approve and sign the amended Southwest Harbor Tremont EMS Planning Committee bylaws as proposed, amended pending final approval from the Southwest Harbor Select Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve and sign the amended Southwest Harbor Tremont EMS Planning Committee bylaws as proposed pending final approval from Southwest Harbor Select Board. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have PFAS treatment. Jesse, would you like to take that one?
So, at your meeting in May of last year, you authorized using up to fifteen thousand dollars of parquet funds for well water testing for PFAS. You briefly discussed at that meeting whether or not to allocate funds for treatment of households found to have high levels of PFAS. Results are showing a number of the homes with a higher than recommended level. Several, if not all of them, have stopped drinking their water and are buying bottled water. A lot of them have been reaching out to the biolab, wondering about if the town was also going to provide funds to treat or help them treat their water. To date, we have used just over five thousand four hundred of the amounts set aside for testing. That would go up a little bit because some testing has been requested, that we hadn't been built for yet. Richard is here from the biolab. Do you want him to elaborate on anything? But, in general, if you want me to look into possibility of the town providing financial assistance, then I can find out what that would look like and bring that back to you, you know, or form a point.
How, how many houses have been tested so far?
As of tomorrow, I would say thirty four, thirty five, something like that. Well, that, that's with the funding that was authorized.
Okay.
If you count stuff we had tested before, it would be more like fifty...
Okay.
Fifty five.
Okay, so, pretty fair number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you're finding PFAS in a lot of them?
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, I know when you were here before, we talked about filters, and you said, just, you know, a regular carbon filter does a pretty good job. Is that correct? Or maybe I misunderstood?
No, that is correct. I mean, it's a matter of, like, so the, the principle of PFAS removal is, is pretty simple. You stick it, I mean, unless you have, like, reverse osmosis, you know, if you provide an opportunity for it to stick to the carbon, it'll do that.
Yeah.
Now, there's lots of different designs. Jay and I, my boss, sometimes argue about, like, whether to say, like, oh, just any old carbon, or like, this one in particular, like, I guess zero water is a very good pitcher filter. And then, so that could, a carbon system could be a pitcher filter, which is, I don't know, thirty, fifty dollars, and then you maintain it. Or a whole household's activated carbon system, which would be thousands of dollars. So, it's a big range of options, but the underlying technology, in principle, is the same. And as long as you take care of it, it'll do a good job.
Yeah, I mean, you can get a small one with a four inch, I mean, you've seen one in my house.
Right, yeah.
You know, that just grew on like a four by ten filter, the systems are pretty inexpensive, and the cartridges are not much.
Yeah, for the, for the replacement filter?
Yeah, yeah.
I probably less than, I don't vote on this.
No, I, I, I buy them regularly. They're at fifteen to twenty dollars per month. Yeah, I mean, it's not substantial.
Someone was, had me looking at their, they had a refrigerator filter cartridge, like a GE, and I, I looked into it, and they claim it removes ninety nine percent of two of the main PFAS. So, I mean, is it the back, you know, so the, the question is always, like, is this the best carbon filter? You know, maybe, maybe not, but they, they will all, they all should do something, put it that way.
My thoughts are kind of, if the town had the funds, it might be nice to install one of the central filters, if someone has it, and leave the disposables up to them. You know, and I mean, it's, you change it with a wrench, it's, you shut the water off, you screw it, it went off, put a new filter in it, put it back on. It's not like, you don't need anyone to come in to do it.
Right.
And I deal with those, you know, pretty regularly myself. It's not a big deal. I mean, the, the biggest challenge is going to be doing the installation, because mine's right after my well, my expansion tank. So, you're putting it onto a fairly major line, but, I don't know, sharp bike connectors, it's really not that huge a challenge. But, I mean, a lot of people aren't going to want to tackle that themselves. But, I mean, I, I would seriously be open to considering, you know, a relatively simple and expensive system that owners can maintain.
So, we just set aside fifteen thousand for it, and we've used up, like, fifty four hundred roughly, so. The only thing I was thinking is, I don't know if we want to get into installing stuff in people's houses like we have. I know that's been a handful sometimes with the, whatever you want to call it, the, the water due to the town, or the old town dump here.
Yeah.
I would, I mean, it would be nice if we had that funding sit there, and so, anybody in addition, you know, who would like to, do you anticipate more people to, to want testing? Because if we had, say, there's another, you know, a hundred people come through over the next year, then that would pay for all of their testing in good shape, like, it would.
Sorry, sorry.
By now.
I think I'll be mostly caught up on everybody who signed up by the end tomorrow.
Yep.
And, but, a few more, yeah, a few more people will trickle in, but I couldn't say it would be dozens more, I don't know.
I just think it's important to at least have people know what's in their water, and then they can make their decision from there. But at least we're helping them find out what, what is in there. What do you guys think?
Yeah, I think, I'd be, it's not... A lot of people buy their own water already. I mean, it's just all of our duty is to be able to provide ourselves with water. You know, doesn't seem like the, they're too expensive to get filter put in, so it's not thousands of dollars.
No, no, it's, I mean, basically what I use are, I don't think they cost a hundred dollars for the, you know.
Rid of water filter things, did we?
Yeah, yeah, those, those work well. We use those too. The, the zero filter that you mentioned, we've had really good luck with those. They come with a little, a tester, you know, not PFAS, but dissolved solid tester, and it's amazing, it takes all of it.
Yeah, I think for the amount of people that are concerned about it in their well, that they should be able to filter their own water.
Yes, yeah, if we have...
I would just like to add, there was a community meeting we had last weekend as well. I think the school has sent out information to bring people in. So, I feel like the community does know about it. I don't know how many more would come in at this point.
What do you guys think?
I don't know, you could consider a bulk buy on the filters, the, the filters, and get, make them available at a discount possibly. You know, if you could get a deal by and, one fifty of them and offer them for...
If everyone buys the same system, though.
Well, you, I was just thinking even what you're talking about, like the verti-type. But whatever, I mean, the, the solution isn't huge. I mean, it's...
I mean, you could research it, Jesse, and just see what, you know, what would be, like, if you checked with the people who take care of the water systems here in town.
Yeah.
Just see what they recommend, and I know, obviously, water flow and all that stuff has to go into it, there's a lot to it, but just kind of get a rough idea of what they are thinking it would cost, and then, because that's who we would probably want to do it. And then if you brought that back, then we could see, you know, how many we could get with it, and, you know, with what funds we have left. If we left another, you know, twenty five hundred dollars in there for testing, I just want to be sure that, you know, that people at least get tested, because they know, that way they know what's in there, and then, then they can make their own decision past that. But, yeah, if you get an estimate, I know they're going to say, well, a lot goes into it, but just a, a ballpark idea.
Do you, Rich, have you done like a one pager with recommendations on dealing with it, or something that could be handed out?
I, I could, I should. Yeah, I usually just talk to people, you know, when I get, if they get their results.
Yeah, but I was, I mean, if they had a stack of those sitting on the counter up here, it might be good.
I could write up a little report, sure.
Yeah, and I mean...
Because, yeah, your options are, your library of options.
Yeah, I, I think that's what people need to hear, because, you know, you hear that, and you don't know if you're talking a ten thousand dollar system, or, or fifty.
An instinct here would be like a Berta water filter, like you said, that, that's to help you today, and then tomorrow, you know, you should get a filter, and then, you know, a year from now, you should have, yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, and maybe a little something about how important it is in drinking water as opposed to shower water, maybe, or something like that.
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll look into that.
Yeah, because I mean...
I'm not totally sure that...
I'm making one.
I don't think that's been well studied, like, what's the, you know, shower risk, but I will look into it.
Yeah, but I mean, a good part of the household, well, probably the majority of water that's used in the house isn't drinking or preparing food. So, a Berta filter might be a really good, a reasonable option.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, thanks. That might be a good place to start, see what comes out of that.
Do you guys agree with that, to have Jesse look into it and just see what, what it, you know, what they are, and then it give us a comeback, and we'll make a decision from there?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
But the, the Berta things are actually really nice, because there's no installation involved.
Yeah, no, I know. You can, my mother's actually, you screw on the faucet, and you can flip it over.
Yeah, well, I mean, they even have pitchers that you can...
Yeah, yeah. All right, so you're probably, you, you do want a motion for you to look into it, Jesse, here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I make a motion to authorize the town manager to research the cost of PFAS treatment and bring this, selectmen back recommendations for a plan.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the town manager to research the cost of PFAS water treatment systems, and to bring this back to the select board for recommendations on a plan. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Dedication of town report.
By the way, Rich, thanks for volunteering to do that, or getting sucked into it, or whatever.
Yeah.
That's my job.
Thanks.
Dedication of town report. Does anybody have any ideas? Howdy?
Thanks, I'll...
No. Usually, you're good at that. John? Upstairs? Yeah, would we, usually it's a...
Usually it's a resident. Usually it's a resident.
A resident, yeah. I don't oppose that at all. I just didn't know if it, yeah.
I was just looking back at the history. Yes, it was all...
They're all residents, aren't they? Yeah, that's what I thought.
There's one year's board committee, but those are all visible.
Could we, as a side note, put something in there for, like a dedication, you know, something thanking him for all of his years? Put it right in the, and don't leak this out to anybody from a newspaper that we...
Yeah.
John would have a fit. Who else could we do though for the actual dedication?
Can we come back to it?
I know, I can't even, I can't, I was hoping someone else had an idea because I couldn't think of anybody, so.
Can we think about it for, till the next meeting?
Yeah, yep, okay. Skip that for the next meeting. Should we do Seawall Road update before tax acquired property in case? Don't we have to go into executive session if you mention names on the properties or no?
If you want to, then yes.
Okay.
If you just discuss it with Matt and Laura, no.
Okay. Do you guys wanna swap that in case anybody has any questions? Okay. Um, we're gonna, I'll swap around then, tax acquired property or the Seawall Road update. Do the Seawall Road update first.
Okay. So you probably may have read recently some updates in the paper of the harbor story regarding the latest Seawall Road from the main DOT. In your packets, there's a copy of a term sheet that they provided to the town of Southwest Harbor and P D National Park for shared maintenance beyond the initial repair. The DOT was fairly short in their timeframe that they wanted the park and the town to answer. So when they did not promptly sign the memorandum, the DOT has sent a letter saying that they're delaying the project until fall because they could not come to an agreement with the town of Southwest Harbor and the park. The town of Tremont is not included in any of this as the section number is fully within Southwest. The Southwest Harbor Board of Selectmen did want their manager to reach out and see, A, if the town Tremont had an interest in participating in the ongoing conversation, the meetings. And B, did the town of Tremont want to participate financially in the future repairs? So I said I'd bring that to you for discussion. I personally don't have a problem participating in meetings and discussions if you would like me to do so. I don't feel there's a good reason for us to participate financially.
Yeah, it's not on our land, so stay out of it.
I'm kinda wondering how much input you can have anyway.
Right. So...
Even attending the meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, you don't need to spend your time there.
Right.
Okay, next we will move on then to tax acquired property.
So in your packet is a memo from Sarah, the tax collector, regarding six properties of which the town has foreclosed for unpaid F Y twenty-three taxes. As you go through them, if you want to make a motion for any of them, the suggested motion is in my memo. Then if you don't, you just take no action. There's a description on each one as to the delinquent amount and the total amount due and whether or not it's the tax collector's opinion on whether they live there, live in town or not in town. And a brief history is available on if they've been foreclosed on in the past.
Nothing's changed since you wrote the summary on any of them?
Um, the only change is, is this one. So tax map eleven, lot twelve C, that owner called on Friday, said they were not aware and that they would be making a payment sometime this week. So that's fine if you wanna give them the week. I will let you know that that one has been previously foreclosed and auctioned in the past. And if you recall, you three could recall, they paid that year, I think it was F Y twenty, was the year after, they paid like the day of your meeting, but you'd already, the bids had been opened. So you had to decide whether to sell it if you recall.
It was off Cape Rock?
Yep.
So she indicated she'd be making a payment this week for the four thousand two hundred sixteen.
No, I understand it's, it's easy to get behind a lot of this stuff. It's just hard for us when they won't make any contact and they're behind four years-ish more, maybe? It's just estimating a year from what this year's is.
Mm-huh.
Um, the one, the last one, seventeen, lot eleven.
Mm-huh.
Is that the one that we, I know it's so hard to...
Yes.
We need to, yeah.
Should be in executive session.
Yeah. That's why I figured we might if it's, because we tried to make arrangements last year, didn't we, for trying to help?
Yeah.
That one, and there is another one.
Yep. Do you guys wanna go into executive session to discuss it further or wait until another time or you?
Yeah, we should discuss it further in executive session.
Okay.
Yeah, some more detail might be good.
Yep. Well, it's a tough subject for everybody too, so it's hard to... Do we have anything else that, before everybody, that's the heat that we, you could put on there, Jesse? I think we're, we've gone through our list of stuff.
Do you wanna do the town manager's report before we go into...
Yeah, do you want me to do town manager's report or? What's that?
Doesn't matter, thank you.
Yeah, you can do that real quick. Well, sorry, I'd feel bad to have to kick everybody out. Yeah, let's do the town manager's report real quick and then, that's okay.
Over the last couple weeks, I had a meeting with the school principal to get a first overall look at the draft school budget. And then assisting the new code enforcement officer with onboarding and getting situated. I assisted MMA with some insurance inspections that randomly select town, several town buildings a year to come to physical inspection. I met with chief hall and harbor master regarding an issue they're working on. Did F Y twenty-six budget work. I had a Zoom meeting with Island Institute. I applied for a shore up grant from Island Institute for continuing work on the harbor master office to try and get some more of those expenses covered. And was successful in getting a fifteen thousand dollar grant for that.
Oh, wow, good job.
Did the financial reports and meeting prep. Office staff was busy with B M B reports, voter changes, working on uploading property cards. Public works has been busy plowing and sanding. Made a repair to truck one and a repair to truck nine and received seven salt deliveries. The harbor master was busy with trash and warp cleanup, snow removal, warp garage work and ordered and picked up lumber for the interior of the harbor master office. And over the next few weeks, I'll continue F Y twenty-six budget work and attending the Riga town screening.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. Do you have the language for us to go into executive session?
I have it.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Oh, great front and center, I didn't even see that there.
I was wondering, I was wondering what that was.
Yeah, exactly, good, good, thank you.
I was wondering what that was.
Yeah, I didn't even notice it.
Oh, I saw it's in there, I was just, they're getting sneakier on those recording devices.
Yeah. And can we, should we invite Sarah in where she's the tax collector?
Oh.
Okay.
You get to see the super secret stuff.
It's gonna be as permitted, if you want to write it down, as permitted by one M R S A four oh five dot six dot...
Dot A, that's the one we always use.
C.
So he can do it short.
To discuss real estate, is that, okay. I make a motion as permitted by, to go into executive session as permitted by section one, M R S A four oh five point six point C to discuss real estate transactions or discuss real estate.
Tax, for tax acquired property.
For tax acquired property, there you go. That's what I was looking for.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session entitled one M R S A four oh five dot six dot C to discuss real estate related to tax acquired properties. Is there any discussion? Oh, we'd also like to invite town clerk Sarah Abbott in for the executive session. Okay, we are out of executive session at six oh nine.
I make a motion to table the tax acquired properties until February twenty-fourth and they can be again discussed in executive session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to table the tax acquired properties until our meeting on February twenty-fourth. And we'd like to discuss that further at that point in executive session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, suggestions for the next meeting? Date of the next meeting?
I make a motion to set the date of the next meeting for February tenth, twenty twenty-five, five o'clock at the town office.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, February twenty, February tenth, twenty twenty-five, five P M at the town office. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor?